That's fine. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting together for the February 21st. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the warrants, at least the payroll warrant has been signed and accounts payables are on the way and we'll take care of that later in the week.
Right.
Very good. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, minutes?
Let's see here. I make a motion to accept the last minutes of February 15th.
Second that.
Was there another one that we hadn't?
No, we're all caught up.
We're all caught up. Very good. The second, all in favor? Very good, thank you. Town Administrator of Weekly Update, no update this week?
We're gonna tape it. Yes, please.
Okay, and next item, Department Head Committee Chair Updates. Will.
Will Langley, District One. We're gonna be posting the roads probably either Sunday night or first thing Monday morning.
Okay.
I just thought I'd let everybody know. And we'll probably post them for like May 15th or something, or something like that is what we're thinking right now. Yeah, I mean if we pull them soon, we pull them soon. I just don't wanna post them and then not have it be long enough, that's all, so.
So Will, is where our office gets calls daily, so if you can let me know personally when they go up?
Yeah, I'll text you either Sunday or Monday.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other updates, department chairs or committee heads? Okay, very good. We're gonna skip liaison updates. We had, did have a meeting today, a budget workshop meeting. I thought it went very well. We got through many of the budgets today. And we've got some follow-up meetings that we're gonna have with the road commissioners, the fire department, rec department, and one more.
Transfer station.
Transfer station. So those will be set hopefully soon and we're on track and on schedule.
Correct.
Great. I'm gonna skip, skip down a little bit. We're gonna take up a new business item. We're joined by three gentlemen here this evening from Sabeago Technics to do a presentation in response to an RFP that the town issued to engage in engineering services to help with many of our site and facility projects. Mark Adams is with us this evening. Please come to the podium. And has a couple of his colleagues with us as well. And so perhaps you could just take a few moments, tell us about the firm, maybe your clients and the kinds of services you might be able to offer at town.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We are so very excited to be here and to speak with you tonight and talk about the possibility of us providing you a wide range of services, actually, as you may need them over time. So my name is Mark Adams. I'm president of Sabeago Technics. With me tonight is Dan Riley, our Vice President of Engineering, and Chris Taylor, our Senior Project Engineer with us, who would be your point of contact, your primary point of contact. Sabeago Technics, for those of you that don't know, is a 42-year-old engineering land development surveying consulting company. We have over 100 employees at this point in four offices in Maine only. We have offices, our main offices in South Portland. We have offices in Bridgeston, in Bath, and we just acquired, just before the end of last year, a survey, a local survey company here in Springvale, Corner Post Land Surveying. So that is now Sabeago Technics. And we are offering not only the great service and people out of Springvale that they have always offered, Dana Libby and his crew, but also all of our other services through that office as well. So in terms of the services that we offer, we certainly offer civil engineering, which is a wide-ranging engineering discipline, from roads to site design to storm drainage to you name it. We have the largest survey staff in the state of Maine with over 35 different survey professionals, providing a whole broad range of survey services. We offer landscape architecture, soils and wetlands science, traffic and transportation needs, engineering needs as well. So really, other than buildings, we can cover most every need that you have for any kind of commercial development, residential development, but also most certainly for municipal services. You asked us to talk about our municipal services in particular. We've been doing municipal services for a long time, from the city of Portland for over 25 years to some neighbors close by. We have a survey contract with Sanford. We do Cornish and Porter and Town of Naples and the Town of Poland, lots of Town of Casco for many years now. So a wide range, small to medium to large municipal services. Our work there really ranges from that typical engineering that you'd expect for that road culvert or the road rehab, to athletic fields and parks, to trails, to parking lots, municipal building developments. We do, we do that whole range of services. We also, and Dan has been doing this for a long time and we have some other folks in our office, we also offer you either peer review or planning support services. So often when you get in a proposal for some development in town, you want somebody to check sort of the work of whoever the consultant is on that. And whether it's stormwater or other things, we offer that. And we actually can be support to the planning board if they so needed it. We do that in a number of towns as well. It all depends on what you need.
So this would be for someone applying for a permit for something that
Absolutely.
they might ask you to look at that and?
So you, for instance, in some towns, what we do, one of our engineers is actually staffed to the planning board. And when needed, if the CEO is not comfortable, if it's a development that, you know, maybe is on the edge of some of your ordinances or whatever, or you wanna understand how how it fits under state law, under DEP law or whatever, we can review that in the context of your ordinances and let you know, this is where we think it complies, this is where we think they ought to improve this for you or what have you. And usually in those towns, when we do that, that's all paid by the applicant, right? There's a process in those towns where they pay a fee to have that peer review planning support service. Again, it's just on a menu of a lot of things that we do that is available to you if you, if you so needed it. We also do things like tax map mapping for you, parcel mapping for you, GIS systems and so forth. So a lot of things that we can do. We're happy to do one or two things. We're happy to do a lot of things for you. Our approach to working with municipalities and really clients in general is you have a primary point of contact. That would be Chris in this, in this case. Chris would be backed up by Dan, who does a lot of municipal work or has for a number of years now. So he has that added depth of experience. And then those, those two gentlemen are supported by a whole ton of people back, certainly in our South Portland office, but even here more locally. We work typically in arrangements like this when we have a general engineering contract of you have a need, a project that you, you need, and we'll give you a scope of work and an estimate of price and you decide if that's something that you wanna go forward with. So you're not tied into anything and we can adjust it to whatever, you know, your budget is or whatever you think you can do yourself versus, like, we'll work with a road commissioner if you have one and we'll go out and look at a road and say, here's some areas that we think, you know, you ought to do some improvements through, but why don't you work with a local contractor and, you know, take care of it? It can be that simple. Or we can do the full road design, you know, and go forward that way. In terms of, I've mentioned a few of our existing municipal clients. It's a long list at this point, some 20 probably municipalities that we work with. And the arrangement and the needs is different in every single one and that works just fine for us. That's not a problem. I think in our proposal, we included a bunch of different examples of signs of projects that we do. We're happy to talk about any of those or talk about, you know, any certain needs that you have. Certainly Chris and Dan would be happy to speak with you, answer any questions that you might have this evening or otherwise hopefully going forward.
Very good. I don't think we've spelled out any specific projects at this time.
Well, I got one.
I know you have, we haven't communicated it.
To them, no.
Right, okay, that's great.
We got, yeah.
I'm sure that department would like it tomorrow, but they've been waiting for this. But we, we have a parking lot that we want to have designed at some point here.
Yeah, for our rec field.
We've decided that, you know, to make it for the bid process and everything and make sure we're staying within all the DEP guidelines and everything, that this was probably the safe way to go. That's why we put this out to bid as we did. And so, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't, that's a great example, so I didn't, and you probably already knew, but I didn't necessarily mention. So yeah, we can handle doing the plans and even the bid specs. We can even help you with the bid process, provide you cost estimates, you know, ahead of time. We try to stay up on, on prices and as they move, you know, around.
Kind of what we really, because what happens is, like, we've kinda put the cart before the horse on this one, or a couple of projects, I guess. We put a bunch of money out for it. We don't know if it's enough. It's way too much. But by doing that, we, we can actually budget for the project.
Absolutely.
Instead of just throwing money at it. And I think that'd be a pretty good thing for us.
Yeah, one of those things that we do, you mentioned, you know, how you've done it. One of the things that we do for a lot of towns is they'll have a list of projects, you know, and we'll estimate those and so you can then budget them out over time, right? Either you're putting away in reserve funds or you're budgeting one project a year, whatever you can afford. So staying current on pricing, of course, is, you know, you estimate it now and you're not gonna build it for four years. Well, you gotta, you gotta take account for that, but.
I have a contractor, so I know all about that.
You know all about that, yeah, yeah.
So here's a question for you, because we happen to be going right into budget season, so it's good timing for us. So what is Mr. Taylor's workload if the board decides to engage a firm? How quickly can we look at some projects and try to get some estimates together? What's the turnaround time?
Oh, if we're just getting started on, on scoping the project with you and giving you some estimates, I mean, he could do that within a matter of weeks, really.
Just in case we wanted to put some on the upcoming budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, the, the, and like I said, there's lots of other people that can help Chris estimate projects and we just need to know what the scope is and that, that's more of a learning curve and maybe adjusting to what you think your, your needs are and so forth and helping you to understand what, what we would suggest, you know, from a design perspective or what have you.
So would you typically have a contact person with the community that would sort of serve as the gatekeeper for you? Because we might have multiple depart, no, I mean at the town level.
Oh, oh.
Because we might have multiple, you know, the transfer station, the athletic department, et cetera. How does that?
We work, we work both ways. Sometimes, some towns like to have a gatekeeper, so whether it's, you know, the town manager, administrator, or what have you, that is aware of, you know, that we're being asked to do these different things. And others, we work directly with the parks director. We work directly with the public works director. It's really, you tell us.
That's something we'd have to consider.
We're gonna have to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean ultimately, especially, you know, just even knowing how your agenda works today. By the way, I was, I was 20 years in municipal management. I worked, I, I, don't ask me how I get into private business and engineering because I'm not a technical person, but I'm pretty familiar with how you folks need to operate. But, you know, you would probably need to approve our, our scopes, if you will, you know, individually. So at least that would come back to you, but, and it would all be spelled out. You'd have a very good understanding of what each task or project is that you, you were asking us to do.
Have any questions of us?
When did you want that?
Last week.
It's already been emailed.
Yeah.
Any, any comments or questions from the public? Joyce?
Hi, Joyce Fadke. Some of the things you've said, I thought were pretty interesting. One of them, you said, like you would work with someone, say, on a site plan, maybe. Large project, something maybe we hadn't seen before. How about something like ordinance zoning reviews? You know, we're up to date with the state, we're, we're in the ballpark. We're even work on a comprehensive plan.
So parts of a comprehensive plan. We don't typically do like an entire comprehensive plan because that gets into things like, like economic issues and goals. But, but absolutely, we, we support through a number of our different disciplines.
Wetlands, there's that, the other thing.
Yep, yep. We can provide you with maps of natural resources that the community has and so forth, which is usually part of a comprehensive process. But in terms of the ordinance review, absolutely. We can, we have people on staff that, that help towns with ordinance review. We get involved in a lot of shoreland zoning updates, you know, to, to ordinances. You do. And other things. And of course, we're on the other side of the table often, right? We're at towns and we're using, we're applying their ordinances, so we see a lot of different things that if you had an interest in, you know, an ordinance to be developed around something in particular, then we've probably seen a bunch of examples that we can, we can bring before you for your consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
For being here and your interest in working with Acton.
Well, we're excited.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good day.
Yes, sir, we are good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's move.
We wanna move on this, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
No, we could. We're already on it. Yeah, exactly.
Great.
What was that?
Go ahead.
Okay, why don't we, we have an item on here in the investment policy and
Never mind.
We're gonna defer that item. I think I need to take another review of the investment policy document. Had some feedback on that and we need to incorporate some changes, so we'll take that up at a future meeting. Probably a good time, though, to circle back on Sabego. Comments by the board?
These guys are legit.
This is nice. They could not just help us.
I've seen some of their plans. They've done before. This is a big outfit. I think they could serve us very well. So I like to make a motion that we use Sabeago Technics as our engineering firm.
Well, I'm gonna second that. I'm excited about that planning board stuff, you know. It's nice we can use them to
In the planning board?
Yeah, you know, in that office too. It's not just here. There's other things they do.
It's a wide range of stuff they do.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm more concerned about rec field, parking lots.
Right, I know. But I'm just saying, that's nice that
It's a nice resource to be able to
Yeah.
Any, any comment from the public? Okay.
Money, yes.
Well, it's gonna be project-specific and of course they have billing rates based on the, the type of individual that is assigned to the project, so it will vary.
He just told us that they were gonna give us estimated numbers on it.
Yeah, for each project, we'll get an estimate and we can decide whether or not we wanna move forward with them or not, so. But the billing rates, we did some checking on the billing rates and they appear to be in line with what
Yeah, and there's only
other engineering firms are charging. But you're also getting someone who knows municipalities and works with municipalities.
It's hard to go by those rates too because, you know, you don't always get what you're paying for. So, you know, it might be all aligned. It's whether or not this company's legit. This one does a really good job. I, I'm, I'm excited to be able to get somebody up to that rec field and work on that. I think that's a project we ought to get right on.
Yeah, we need to get it done.
Yeah, that and the parking lot.
You know, I think, I think when we get a project complete, it would be good to, for us to sit back and sort of assess, how did it go?
Exactly.
How do we like these guys? Did they add value here or not? And if so, then we go on to the next project. I think there's something we'll just, we'll kinda ease into.
I think you'll be able to, most of the time with these engineers, you can figure them out in the first month of your work.
Okay, it's been, any other comment? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Okay, terrific. Now we can get moving on. We got a number of projects.
And we can do the rec field?
I think, yeah.
Are you gonna be the principal contact with them? Is that fair?
She's the liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, I, it'll vary. I figured because of your, your, your work on the
That's where they come in, the engineer.
That's what they're for, yeah.
I probably am not going to, but that's fine.
I, I, I'm hoping that because we've got these experts, that they should be able to walk right in as long as they, you know. Everything should be pretty plain Jane for these guys.
Okay, great.
Then after that, can we think about the parking lot?
I, I, I think
One project at a time, yeah.
I think we got, you know, next to the field is parking lot, transfer station. I don't know if there's anything else out there, but I know Robin's got a bunch of ideas. We need him to be able to sit with someone and figure out what's feasible, what does it cost? We can figure out if these are things we wanna do in.
We've already, the, the rec's already got money set aside for that parking lot. This is something there where in the warrant article, it didn't specify exactly what the money was for. It was for the, for the field, so we can, she can use that money. We can use that money to get these guys rolling on a design.
Need to make sure that roll over.
They were worried about that.
Anyway, we could always put an article to roll that money over.
Okay.
I keep coming back to the transfer station because I've had so many conversations with Robin about this. And he has a number of ideas about what to do there. And in terms of the timing of if we wanted to do something for the June meeting with a warrant for something there, when does that have to be done?
Well, I mean
And I'm thinking about scoping a project with some budget estimates so that we can then think about, does this make sense or not, and decide to advance it or not.
Yeah, and I think that's why I asked him the, the timing question. And I appreciate David's in one project at a time, but I think for budget purposes, maybe you give him a couple and decide which ones you wanna move forward with, especially the transfer station.
Well, I mean, right now, that, that one, the rec has the money to go for.
Right, right.
To pay for the plans.
Right.
Doesn't it have to be done?
The transfer station does not.
No, but
At this point, okay, that's the problem. So really
You mean to pay for the engineering or the whole project?
Yeah, we have to pay for the engineer.
Right.
So you gotta start from engineer and work up. So when the engineer's gonna have to come down as a preliminary, they're gonna come down and check the site out. You, they're gonna, Robin's gonna say, I wanna do this, I wanna do that. They're gonna tell you what you can do and what you can't do. They're gonna give you a, a, a site, a val, you know, a plan, a rough plan, and see if that's what you want. But there's gonna be costs of that. Then they can give you an idea of what it's gonna cost. It takes a while to get to that point. They can't just show up and say, yeah, this is a hundred thousand dollar job. They're gonna do literally engineering before they can give you that price because they don't know the price.
So we don't have a general purpose engineering budget?
No, this is, we didn't have an engineer before.
It really should be coming out of each department's project. Like, we have the money set aside for this. That's where that money comes from. Rec has got their money to start it out with.
Yeah.
We start there. He should be putting in a budget with engineering, you know, some money set aside for engineering to get that project started.
Okay.
That's something we should be working on with everybody.
He may be able to come up with it this year. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just the engineering piece.
Better yet, right now, we're in budget season. He can come up with it, so.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is, here's a classic example. We got something, we got an idea.
Yes.
And we need to flesh that out, figure out what's feasible, and we need to engage an engineer to help us do that. So how do we get, get that service engaged and where does that money come from? And it's kinda like a chicken and egg thing here.
I just laid it out.
Okay.
So we'll use the rec. Rec's got forty thousand dollars right now.
That one I get, yeah.
Okay, so that, we can engage that one tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. We could engage the parking lot out here if we felt, because we have money set aside.
Yeah.
Okay. Robin has to budget right now.
Put some money aside for the engineering.
For engineering, for his project up there. We should be able to call them to get a rough idea what the engineering's gonna be.
Okay.
Okay.
That would help, yeah.
That's what, what he's gonna do, or we, somebody's gonna do.
So he probably would have to come out and just spend an hour with Robin at the transfer station to get a sense of what needs to be done there and give Robin an estimate so that he can make its way into a
Exactly.
a budget. Okay, just trying to clarify this. You got that, Robin? So you can work with Jennifer on that and keep me in the loop as your liaison. Fair enough? All right. Anything more on this? All right. The facility assessment update, RFP.
So last week you guys approved it. Remember, the original contract had all three in it. So I asked him to redo the contract so that you could sign it tonight. And it does very clearly say, the municipal town offices in former fire station building at 35 H Road, it's got the ten thousand dollar price on page two. Everything else is just the same.
Very good. So we need to make a motion to accept the RFP from TRC?
I'll second that.
Any comment? All in favor? Motion carries. I'd like to thank the Capitol Planning Committee for bringing this forward. I think it's great. It's a great addition and I look forward to seeing the report.
All right, there you go. He needs one too.
Now I got one.
I gave my pen.
I left mine.
I took it off her desk.
I left mine on her desk.
Okay. West Shore Culvert. Anything more to report there?
No more than what I did last week.
Yeah, no, we're just, we're still supposed to be reviewing the plans. I know Will's only had them a few days as well and we're still going over the timeline.
Okay.
Reached out with Maureen, so
So maybe at the next meeting?
By next week, I'm hoping to fill in the dates and get any opinions from
So we can actually issue the RFP? Wonderful.
Nice.
Special town meeting warrant.
So we have been working on this, the two warrant articles for, first of all, for the, to see if the town will authorize the select board to expend seventy thousand from the undesignated fund balance to engage the certified public accountant services of Barry Talbot and Roy. And then the second one is to authorize the select board to invest in the town, to invest town funds per the Town of Acton's investment policy. A legal question did come up on Article Two about appropriating the money in FY 2223 but not spending it because we wouldn't be paying Mr. Roy until 2324. So we've sent that over to legal for an opinion. Essentially, I'm gonna recommend to the board that we push this off a week or two. Warrant and finance is scheduled to meet Monday. If that's your, the only purpose of your meeting, I would ask them to cancel because we're not gonna be ready for Monday with you guys not having another meeting. So right now, we have the town meeting scheduled for March 21st. We've got until the end of April. So we just need to buy a little more time.
So that date may change.
That date may change, so. I don't know if that was the only reason you guys were meeting Monday. If it was, Dennis?
Yeah.
We're gonna withdraw our item. We're not quite ready.
Could I ask you to switch the sequence of those so the two becomes one? I think we should take up item one, the investment policy first.
Absolutely.
And then if we go forward with the second one, we'd do that. Okay?
Okay.
Any concerns about that?
Nobody, the way to me.
Uh, it does to me, so let's, all right. Anything further on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Done Sabego Website Presentation.
It's Dan's turn.
Waiting patiently.
Waiting and waiting. We've got some handouts for you, so you can follow along with my rambling when I get up to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, so first I'd like to publicly apologize this has taken so long. Part of the nature of my full-time job is I can get called away today for tomorrow and be gone for two weeks. That's what happened the last time I was scheduled, so it's moving along. Let's just say that.
It's understood.
Out of all of the responses, we received probably five I would consider acceptable responses, meaning they had numbers in them that we were looking for. They had monthly recurring costs for web hosting in them. And they covered everything that we had in our RFP originally. Those five are listed here. EMRG, so I'm going from the bottom of the list to the top. They're out of Los Angeles. The original or initial build that they quoted was thirty thousand dollars with a fifty dollar recurring fee for the monthly web hosting. Tech Nerds out of Miami, Florida. They committed just under twenty seven thousand with five hundred dollars a month hosting. That is very expensive for hosting. A company called Civic Plus out of Kansas. Their initial fee was twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars with a monthly recurring for hosting of three seventy-five. A company called Revised out of Michigan. Ninety-seven hundred dollars for the initial build and a hundred and fifty-eight dollars roughly for monthly hosting. And my choice would be a company called Zebra Love. Their non-recurring cost, the initial build, was roughly thirty-five hundred dollars, so it's much less expensive. And their monthly recurring fees for hosting is sixty dollars a month.
Most importantly is their location.
Yeah, that's
That's what I was getting at.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you skipped that because you named all the other ones.
I'm sorry, I am a, a big proponent of local, supporting local as much as we can. Zebra Love is out of Leamington, Maine. Zebra Love has built, they support, they've consulted on several other community-based websites, so around here at Sabego Lakes, Chamber of Commerce. They did the Town of Cornish website and they assisted with the Town of Newfield website. Those links are on this page if you wanna go look at them. I was very happy with their work. It's not the latest and greatest that you will get in websites today. But it far exceeds what we have today. Easy to navigate. They're built for rendering on a cell phone as well as a computer screen, so it's easy to read. If you're out in the mountain town and you're looking for something, you can pull it up on your phone without scrolling fifty ways. So I would totally recommend that we go with Zebra Love for the thirty-five hundred dollars initial fee and the sixty dollar hosting. And that will give us roughly double the amount of email accounts that we have as well, and that would be included in the sixty dollar a month hosting fee, which allows the town to grow as we add more web, not web pages, as we add more email addresses. The last thing I will say is that all of these companies will give us a site that we can manage, that Jennifer can manage or her designee, probably at least me initially to help with the build and getting files and things where they need to be, and then she could designate someone else at the same time. I think that was all I had to say. Questions?
The, the technology to maintain websites, are they all using similar technology with similar capabilities and complexities?
Most companies today are using a product called World Press, which is easily manageable, very much like what Jennifer is doing with today's website. I've worked with Teto before. I know what technology he uses. It's extremely similar to that.
So are they actually building, designing and building a website? Is that what the non-recurring cost covers?
Yes, so they will build from scratch a website to our specifications. So once we decide on which company we want to go with and we actually contract with them as your owner's representative, if you will, or designee, I will work directly with the company and Jennifer to come up with a website that we're all happy with, that's easily navigable. I think that's it. And easy to use, you know, easy to use for the community. I mean, it's not
That's
not a shock that generally speaking, the age group in the Town of Acton is an older generation. And that's not a bad thing, but that makes it easier for them to navigate as well and find things they're looking for.
Well, we haven't done the design yet, I assume. We haven't created the specifications. How can they quote what the, what it's going to cost to build a website?
The building of a website is very generic, right? So we say, if we want a picture here, so I'll pick the Town of Cornish's website. They have scrolling pictures along the top of their webpage of different areas in town, right? They code the pic, they code the section that has the pictures, and they say, look here for the pictures. And whatever pictures that Jennifer uploads there, we'll scroll through.
So it's basically a, a template with different capabilities?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
A customized template. So they will build the template, and then we can add all of the meat.
So did the template for all of these firms have similar capability?
Yes, absolutely.
Really?
Yes.
So that's amazing that there could be that kind of price differential.
Yeah, different, different companies do use different technology.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I could sit here and I can code a static webpage from scratch, right? And I could come pretty damn close to what we have today. I could probably do it in two weeks, start to finish. But you have professionals that do this for a living, and that's why they can charge so much money.
They have a generic off-the-shelf template
Yes.
that basically they're selling.
Right, this is the starting point. And then they customize that template for the Town of Acton.
And I'm sorry to be so anal about this, but the customization, customization of what if it's a template that's already built? What do they customize?
Customization would be
Colors.
Colors. What we want for pictures there. How we want the text, where we want the text. So we can have a menu bar across the top.
Yeah.
We can have a menu bar down on the side like we have today. We can have a, a dropdown that says, click here for all your departments, and then in there, you click on to go to the rec department or the mayor grant committee or one of the road commissioner's websites or something like that.
So beyond a, a new sort of organization of the web material that these templates, I guess, would provide, is there anything new that would come with this website in terms of a feature or a capability that we don't have today?
There could be, yes.
Calendar of events?
Calendar of events, so you can actually physically pull up a calendar and see the calendar, so you can see every Wednesday there's a select board meeting or, you know, anything, right? There could be a scrolling feature across the top. Announcements, the transfer station is closed today due to weather.
Yeah.
Right? You don't have to look for it, it's there. Just go to the webpage. You don't have to scroll, you don't have to find it. It's right there in front of you, no matter what platform you're using. We could go so far as, and I'm not suggesting this by any means, but we can go so far as e-commerce where we can accept tax payments online.
And that would be integrated with our software somehow?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would have to look into that. We have looked into that a couple of times. The fees are, fees are pretty hefty, but
Fees for what?
For the middleman to collect the, collect the tax.
It's the e-commerce and the credit card fees.
Middleman between the website and the software?
But if you look at, I've, I've gone through Newfield and Cornish is what they both created. If you look at the formats, I mean, they're completely different. So I, you know what I mean? So that gives you a lot of ideas of, of what we can do, but I like Cornish's a lot better.
How would we come up with our design specifications?
Jennifer and I can sit down and we can come up with what we think would work best, and then we can present it to the board, and obviously, you guys will be making the final decision. And we don't have to go just by what we know that they've created. We can look anywhere. We can say, hey, we like this on Sanford's site. We want this on our site.
There's, there's been, I don't know, a lot, but there's been comments from the community about the need to upgrade our website.
Right.
And so how do we, I'm not sure that people were always specific about what they had in mind when they said that. How do we tap into that and find out if there are capabilities or features that the public would like? How do we, how do we learn what those are?
As technology involves or evolves, the company we host with will say, hey, we have this new feature. Is that something you're interested in? So for instance, if we're shopping around for e-commerce, we want to take tax payments online, we can reach out to them and say, hey, is this available? If it's not, what do we have to do to make it available? Is it something you can code for? So I work for a technology company. If a customer asks me for something, it's my job to make it happen for them.
So if we come up with a, a, a list of design requirements or specifications, is there any limit as to how, how big that can be?
I don't know.
And does that alter the price in any way? Or are these fixed prices?
I don't believe it's going to alter the price. So the way web hosting works, you have a domain name, actonmain.org, right? That points to someone's server somewhere, and typically, there's several different methods of hosting, but you can have five hundred gigabytes of storage. That's huge, by the way, for a website, right? That would give you potentially every page for every department and every committee in town if that's what you want to do.
I, I was thinking more about the actual buildout of the site. Is there any, is there any, given that we haven't defined what our requirements are?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any opportunity that as we do that, this non-recurring fee will change?
It is possible, unlikely, though. Originally, they had quoted us, let me back up. The non-recurring fee, probably not.
Okay.
Unless we ask for the moon, right?
Yeah.
I doubt that there's something we're going to ask for that, A, they haven't done or B, they don't know how to do.
Okay.
The monthly recurring costs, the hosting fees vary a lot.
Yeah.
Originally, Zebra Love quoted us thirty dollars a month, and that was great, right? But it only gave us fifty email addresses.
Yeah.
That's where we're at today in town. We need more than that, or we're going to need more than that.
So email addresses, does that equate to a new email system for the town?
I can't speak to that without knowing what you have. So today, you probably either use a web client, meaning you go to a webpage to get your email, or you have an email client installed on your computer, Outlook. There's all kinds.
None of the above? The, the one we have?
Well, we have, we have the web-based and Outlook. And we have a lot of, you can tie into, I mean, we can, we can change the, we can download any of those different email address, email format.
One of the things I would love to see, and it's just me personally, is a new email system.
Yeah.
Because what we have is rather, I, I find cumbersome to use.
So that's totally outside the purview of the website?
Hmm?
That's totally outside the purview of the website?
That's what I thought.
It's more technology-driven, so you say what you wanted, an email system, and then whoever's running technology in town can make that happen, whether you want to use Outlook on your phone, we can make that happen.